Now I'm ready, Mr. Chairman.
Call meeting order. Public comment.
Really have that much, you do have it in the package. The committee interviewed the assessors' position. And the recommendation of the committee is to hire Tina Hassler as our assessor. And her contract is in there, but is to be approved on Wednesday. The airport meets tonight. Just to give you a little example of what may be on the agenda. Tea hanger posts, cracks in asphalt, drainage, grate, tea hanger door paint, gutters. Security cameras are out there. Assume that we're gonna hear how they're working. Discussion of farm lease, and then meeting scheduled for this coming year. Those are the highlights without getting into the basics. So those are coming up. There's really not much to say about the budget for this coming year. Everything's not been downloaded into it this week's payroll, so I'll try to have that available to you Wednesday morning. Okay? Do you have a question?
Yes. What, where are we at on the fuel pile at the airport?
Okay, we, I'm glad you brought that up. Number one, we do have a contract to deal with on the agenda with Hanson's, which basically is, is kinda like a parts list on what they're gonna do and what it's gonna cost us. It's not for any particular project.
It's not their retainer?
Well, it's sorta, it says what they're gonna charge us this coming year, or the, or the different things that they're gonna do for us. In other words, if they're gonna do is writing, it's so much an hour. If they're gonna do this, it's so much, that kind of thing. As far as where we're at, we have not heard at this point. And as far as I know, or Joe knows, I've talked to him.
That's an agreement.
Right. There has been no notification for us telling us where we're at.
Now that, that sixty thousand that we approved as our part of that, where is that? Advise me, or bring me up to speed on that. Did we put that in escrow, or did we write them a check already?
No, nobody has been.
We agreed to do it when, when time comes up.
Nothing's been paid, encumbered. We don't know anything, any, any way yet because we don't have approved projects at this point. Or they're reassessing our projects. Now, as far as where that money is, remember we were gonna sell debt certificates and pay for that out of farm ground revenues. Okay?
Okay.
So, and we'd pay, they'd be over, explaining it's over a five or ten year period.
We may have to re-look at that because we're losing a lot on our farm.
Well, it is, the budget figures reflect these particular items already. So, in other words, if you ask, is it gonna change where we're gonna wind up at the end of the year? You know. Unless we don't do anything, then it's gonna even be, leave us more money at the end of the year. Okay? So does that?
Yes, yes, I understand.
All right.
What's, you know what the tab for this Hanson's gonna be, a total?
I can't remember. It's, one of them's five percent and one of them's ten percent of the total project. And I can't remember what those add up to at this point. Carl, do you?
And we, and that money comes-
It's under a hundred grand.
That money comes out of, out of, out of the grant money, correct?
No, the, the money, we will, we will go to one of the local banks, shop them for the best rate. We will sell debt certificates and then pay it back over a set period of time.
We're not paying that until they do the project.
But this Hanson money, that's what I'm talking about.
We're not, by signing that, we're not obligated to pay anything.
Right, that's correct.
Unless they do something. And I think there, in the total project at the airport, the engineering fees were a part of that, yes.
Right, yes. But, and we're, say if the project's a million dollars, we're responsible for fifty thousand of it, for example. So.
That's what I was thinking, fifty or sixty.
Yeah, somewhere in there. And I'm sorry, I don't remember. It's, we've been through a lot.
Year ago, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're covered either way. If it's a go, we have the mechanism to take care of it. If it doesn't go, then we'll have to go back to Plan B and go from there.
Okay.
What's your?
You're gonna talk about work coming up, I assume, Mr. Zuger?
Sure. Yep.
Can you think of anything I've forgotten? Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Andy? Did you get your leak fixed? Did you get your leak fixed?
It's not dripping right now, but I know it's running up everywhere.
I do.
We got about two or three little things we're working on, but nothing major, I don't think.
Um, I got something I wanted to, I think it probably falls on grounds. I think everybody in here is of the same opinion that Christmas tree was really a hit. I think that really looks good. I've had some discussions with my employer, and I need to, I need to do it.
Sorry, nothing, I was just telling him I need to pour again after your-
Okay. And this may be in Andy's plate here, but I wanna enter into some discussion with Randy and, and the city that might fund this, but we might, and Randy's, or Andy's brother Bruce would be the architect of this whole thing. But there are some trees, some beautiful blue spruce trees located south of town here that we can maybe have for next to nothing. And if we engineer it right, we might be able to dig one of those up with a good sized root ball on it, not with a truck, but with a backhoe, and plant it in there. Would the board be interested in allowing this, we'll call it a group, to plant a permanent tree there and then maintain that? Which means Bob would have to water it every week religiously to keep it from dying. Would that be an idea you guys would be interested in?
Not forever, but for, right.
For a couple of years, two, three years.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, at least two or three years, yeah. It'd have to be taken care of. Once it takes off and goes, that thing will be, it'll be as, I'm, I'm talking maybe a twenty footer, which would be manageable and would have a real good chance of living. Would you agree maybe twenty footer'd live if we did it right? And then, in that general spot, or maybe, maybe you guys have got a better idea of it. If you don't like that spot, or it's a, it's a, I'll call the committee doesn't like that spot, maybe there'd be a better spot. But Randy told me he hit a bunch of concrete that's about three feet down. It's just a whole bunch of brick and junk.
And then somebody said that that's that way all over, or in field.
But that, that's manageable, that's more real.
Right. I just wonder what you all think about that idea? And if you, if you buy into that, if you say, no, I don't wanna do that, let's just put a Christmas tree up every year and be done with it. That's just an idea too.
That's gonna be a problem finding for the next twenty, thirty years a Christmas tree that someone's gonna be-
It's a shame you gotta cut down a forty foot, perfectly good forty foot tree to-
Yeah, oh yeah.
For thirty days of entertainment.
Someone said, well, you put a five or ten foot tree there, well, those trees grow six inches a year.
Yes, those blue spruces.
I mean, the part of it that's nice about it, it's so big. I mean, you notice it, you know, like you come up Route One, and you know, you see that and the courthouse at night, and I mean-
It's beautiful.
It is. And that, you know, I've seen some pictures of, well, in the papers the other day of that Christmas, when the snow came on.
Yeah.
I think it's something that needs, I'm all for it.
Okay.
And it could be done, you know, if you could get a big enough one to start with.
Well, would you, would you care then if I, if I just made some calls and, and as a designated board member to see if we can get Randy and, and Ernie and some of those guys to cooperate? Maybe get your brother to give me some advice on picking out a tree and, and digging it up? I mean, there's a way to do it and do it right, and I'm not sure I know how to do it. But if we could get a twenty or maybe even twenty-five foot nice tree to plant up there, you guys wouldn't be against it.
Has nothing to do with what you're talking about.
Okay.
A tree spade is probably more successful, based on a big semi.
Right.
And you can't-
Well, then Ernie brought it up, how are we gonna get it in there?
Well, you may have, well, it may have to be the same way that we did when we, we worked on the tower.
Yeah, maybe a big project to get it down.
But you may have to move those, those stones.
Right.
And to be able to get a, but you, I used to do it a lot. I've endured a lot of, you might only be able to get a twelve, fourteen foot tree, but that's still a bit of a substantial-
I've got, my spade'll plant a twelve, fourteen foot tall tree.
Well, you may be able to get a bigger one.
Yeah, yeah, we can get a ninety inch spade, I know where we can get a ninety inch spade. So that's something we'd have to consider. But if we wanted to go with a bigger tree, even bigger than that, then we'd probably have to dig a trench around it and take a cable and cut it and raise it up and put it on a truck. And it's complicated, but I just, you know, I don't look like, except for Alan, give me that objectional look. I don't really want a tree on Christmas, on the square.
I'm the one who said I like to grow out the back, so.
Okay.
That's, that's one of the things, I'm your representative of the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, okay, okay, well, I need to court you a little.
I was ready to get slapped side ahead for it, but I think it turned out to be worth it.
I recommend we turn this over to the Building and Grounds Committee.
Okay.
And one thing you're gonna have to consider, there's a, another tree right beside it. It's probably gonna have to be moved to another place.
Yeah, that little one that Ernie planted there with the-
That was David Dick.
Or Dick, okay.
Trees for-
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
With Sodinky, it's not much of a tree.
But it needs, we'll have to- That would be the only thing I would say is like, try to get a lot of involvement from a lot of these different people. I mean, everything from, like I said, the, the chamber to merchants around, to like, that organization thing. Cause they planted trees all over too. Everybody I've talked to, they absolutely love that whole, and it was perfect because it didn't rain, it didn't do anything else, it was nice, and, you know.
I would hope that this-
Thousand kids up there.
That this Christmas committee, or whatever, would take the responsibility of watering it.
Well, the key to is lots of water.
Yes. Yeah, so it can't be missed. And I don't know that we need to put that responsibility on.
I was at a restaurant in Terre Haute Friday night, and a lady that grew up in Paris was there. And she was over here, happened to be over here to visit family and saw that going on up there. And she was just totally amazed at the people that were there and how nice, you know, everything looked and everything. And she said, you know, that was pretty nice, you know, that the community's doing that. Brought back old memories, she said, so.
I think it was truly a community effort, that's what made it so special. You had just so many different people and groups, I should say, involved.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah, yeah.
Dan?
County Health Board, the vacancy, I've talked to John McNary, and he has done some research. He's called Ollie, and he called Cindy Bell, so he is, is willing to serve. So we'll bring his name up, probably, what, first meeting in January? And then, cause I gotta go through the Health Department Board meeting, which is next week. And then we will fit him on the board in January, if that's okay. Most of you know John, I think, so, and he's willing to do it, which is good. It's hard to find people serving on committees. It's basically seven in the morning when they have a meeting, it's kinda early.
That's what I would like, because it was seven in the morning instead of in the middle of the day.
So I think that's been taken care of. I don't know if you know, but Jerick has been released at the Health Department, which I think-
You told us that.
And Dan was out there, we meet every month, and Alan and I kind of discussed that, maybe we don't need to meet every month because that gives three meetings on a Monday. So we'll discuss it today, and it's not set in stone to have a meeting every month, is it? I thought maybe every three months, but I always go out every week anyway and check on things. And if there's a problem that comes up, then I can set a meeting or bring it to somebody.
So I think that's a good idea.
Cause it makes it bad, because we get down here at eleven, eleven thirty, and we run out there and craft feed. Got mad one time because we were late and didn't post it, so.
I think back before us, we don't probably, that used to become a hotbed out here.
I knew that, yeah, yeah.
It could become a hotbed.
And you could change your meeting day, but also it could not be a Monday.
Well, we'll talk about it later. So that's, that's one of the things that we're maybe-
Keep it under wraps now.
You're gonna be there.
I'm not on there anymore.
You're still on there. I'm still on there today.
Oh, I guess I am tomorrow. Uh, one thing I forgot that pertains to is probably Andy's video with whoever's on there.
Wait a minute, that's two times on Andy's video.
I know, I know.
Andy feel like he's doubling on your shoulders there.
I know decision. I know decision. The jail garage roof is about to come apart, and I don't know what the-
Just press the button on the side.
It's, it'll quit. Is that something Sheriff, that you have on your agenda?
I haven't even looked at the garage roof yet. I've been stuck inside, but I mean, I know there's started to be quite a few shingles floating around the parking lots.
It's looking pretty bad.
I don't have, well, I was in the garage a couple of times this week, I haven't noticed any leaks, but I think it brought to my attention earlier that it's something that's probably gonna have to be, with that, pretty quick.
I didn't mean to step on Carl's, because that's, because he's the chairman of that committee. I just thought about that, we need to probably get that, somebody needs to get us a bid or two on that and think about getting that fixed.
That'll be a part of our tour to consider.
When is, when is it tour?
I don't know.
Can I wait the snowstorm?
Well, you can't, can't do any roofing now anyways.
We'll clear the big rain, we'll see where there really is leaks.
Well, that's something you need to look at, you know, you know, next big rain and see if there is any leaks.
It'll be in the air, it'll warm.
It's still in bad shape. You're gonna have to have it down, is that something you need, we, we probably need to look at? Probably get an estimate on it?
When the time comes, yeah.
I mean-
Next spring, summer, yeah. Now, you, you'll have, we wanna get a couple of different estimates.
That's all I have.
Earl?
I don't have any.
Alan?
Uh, just a couple items, one is the dovetail and Dan's, the idea of committees and whenever they're meeting. I think, like we talked before on the rental shelter, like, too much for every three months, and then as necessary. We could set them up, I think, like that. Couple of different things that, you know, we had some concern between consultant and county clerk's office on insurance, and saw some emails floating back and forth, and they were gonna try to meet. And then I think there's stuff going on at the county clerk's office in December, so then they pushed that back, and they're gonna try to meet in January. And I know from Travis, he'd be happy to come in and meet with us anytime also on that aspect. Cause they also reviewed the, the tape, so they'll have some ideas of what we can share back and forth. One of the things also, and I don't think it's on here, we talked about it at the last county board meeting. I'm not sure how we do this, I really, from an insurance standpoint, like to see the resolution that we had. I think you guys talked that we already had it one time, so that once and for all, it's maybe down in our, in our legality as part of having insurance benefits available for our office holders. I don't, don't think that's on there, but I don't know how to get that on there, that's something we talked about the last time.
You mean to change the handbook?
Yes. So that, and the other thing on the handbook part two, again, dealing with insurance, is a resolution on people who are maybe not partaking of the insurance benefits specifically, what their benefits are. And we try to keep that updated, be a little bit more proactive instead of reactionary, so that everybody knows when they sign up to work for us, that what they're, or even if they're running, they also know if they're running for county clerk's office or treasurer. Here's something that they're gonna be able to receive or not receive. And how that usually works or not.
Let's get that on the agenda for January and-
You want, Augie and I can work on the, on the handbook and get that squared and get it up to the, the state's attorney and get the wording right, and at least we'll get that part done, and then the other things we can address.
Right, and then on the other side, the resolution part of the agenda.
Have an insurance bias.
That's very sad. So we, uh, we'll try.
I was gonna say, and I wouldn't mind seeing, I just, cause I wanna review a little bit on that handbook anyway, so.
We're not gonna rewrite the whole handbook, it's just gonna be a paragraph.
Well, I assume it's, it's in the same spot, and if that's the will of the board, I mean, that's, that's the other part of that. Also coming up, you know, Wednesday we'll have approval of a workers' comp bid, which, you know, we already talked about that in our last board meeting, we had seven, two of them this time around. It looks like it's gonna be a good deal. The other thing, or a little bit on the, I don't know exactly how, but usually, and then it, wanna hit some talking about, the possibility that we need to look at tax abatements for NAL as they completed their, their huge addition down there, and how it impacts the county. Also, there's an inter, enterprise zone that we've talked about, and the intergovernmental relationships between themselves and the city and the various other cities, like Kansas and Crispin also, and shocking rain and stuff. I mean, so that we're all on the same page on that. And that'll be coming up on Wednesday, I'm not sure I can answer any of your questions. But if you have them, please ask, and maybe I can find out before that, or we can get ahold of Paul. Paul Ruff is kind of the person that knows probably as much or more about those two things. And I think he's been talking with Augie, so Augie may have an idea. Carl, do you have something?
Enterprise zone, I know we talked about participating in that, and there was talk about us contributing, what, fifteen hundred?
Twenty-five, twenty-five hundred.
Does this authorize us to pay that?
No, they've never-
No, we haven't got that.
Right, it's kinda like you were talking about Hanson's a while ago. We just, we have not formally come to a board and said, that's what we were wanting to do, that's what we talked about. It's a great question, though, because what this is, is just the idea that we're, we're all willing to work together, like many of the things Aaron has on our intergovernmental relationships and contractual.
Actually, it authorizes them, authorize abatements, as I read it. We are, we're giving permission for them to put a package together, and they will have not only us, but they will have schools, the school districts there, and everybody has pre-signed that, yes, we realize if we can get this, we're gonna have, we will give the abatements. That's all in that resolution.
And I think there's even more of that too. I mean, as far as like, what, cause you're gonna have a central group, or basically a director who's gonna be given some authority to do things for the benefit, hopefully, for the benefit of all those people involved or those groups involved in the enterprise, so that's a good point. The other point of that is, they're gonna, and of course, that all has to be approved by state and their three people panel and all that stuff. But this is kind of the start of it, so it's a very question in my mind to ask. Anybody else have any questions on, on those things that we need to find out before we do it?
As always, I'm a little confused here. Are we talking about the NAL abatement?
Two different things, between enterprise zone-
Okay, I'll make sure that doesn't have anything to do with the enterprise zone, okay?
Well, it, it can, yes, it can, I shouldn't say that. Yes, yes, it definitely can. But their abatements that we're looking at approving, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen items, my understanding, Mr. Chairman, are separate and to be all together at this stage. Cause we do not really have the enterprise zone in operation at this time.
Okay, those abatements.
Is that, is that what you, you understand too?
Are we voting on those Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, and it's on the agenda?
Yes.
And it tells you what the figures are, how much money we're talking about?
No.
What it did, this is what we talked about, it was last month. Just to give you an idea, there's one a hundred percent, a hundred percent, down for five years or whatever.
And their abatements are only for the new building, and, and the abatements are if you have twelve hundred.
I think it's thirteen hundred.
Whatever number, you have that many people employed, if you don't have that many people, you will not get that.
Yeah, and it goes down based on that. So like, they have twelve hundred, whatever percentage that is, then that's the percentage that's applied to the abatement also.
And we're only, and we're talking about our part of the taxes. The school has to agree to theirs, the schools that are involved in that area have to agree.
Right.
Or it'd be, it'd be just what the parents-
And it's not possible to come up with the final figure, because the final assessment is not there yet.
I don't know whether it's District 95 or-
You know, you got a law park figure? And it's for ten years?
Yeah, but it's not a hundred percent for ten years.
Right, that's what, that was my second question, it goes in increments.
Right.
So at, at the end of ten years, they're paying a hundred percent for the eleventh year.
Yes, eleventh year, right.
Yes. That's on, what that's being assessed at, at that time. They're not having to pay for this, basically for the improvement, what it amounts to. My understanding is there's still amounts, and see, they're, they're still gonna be paying because of a certain amount of taxes on that land anyway.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
Okay.
All they're, all they're getting abated is a new building for a period of time.
And that's a fifty thousand square foot building?
I don't know.
Paul would be the one, I mean, if he can get you the exact figures on that, Mike, I mean, unless, I mean, I could try to call him, and then he could try to call you, or whatever you wanna do, but that way you'll have the figures and you have them in front of you if you want. But they won't be, I don't know how they're gonna do that, because they're still in the process of building that, so the assessment on that.
Yep. And they don't know what it's gonna be, that's what.
So they're gonna build it?
It's already started, it's done. I mean, they, they've worked on that expansion up there, they don't, they've been out there lately on the, on the west side. I mean, they put on another bunch, that's how they're employing, that's how they're gonna employ thirteen hundred people now.
Okay. And we're, we're gonna give them a tax break just because they're asking for it?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't understand, if they've already, nor they say, well, listen, we'll build this building if you give us a tax break. We're building the building either way, and why are we, why are we, why is everybody, the schools and the city and everything saying, no, you pay us the taxes you owe us on that new building, just like I'd have to, just like Jeff would have to, just like Bennett have to, build up a new building. I, I'm not, I just wonder what's behind it.
Why are we doing it?
Why are we doing it?
Six hundred jobs, tax base after that.
Yeah, with high employment, for them to stay here and be a stable part of our community for ten years.
Fourteen million dollars a year.
How much?
I think it's like six, isn't that what they generate? I mean, that's, I mean, that's the premise. I think they probably built that with the idea that that was going to happen, Mike, that either a different-
Well, as I say, they're gonna build it anyway.
I don't know that they were gonna build that without the expectation that this was gonna happen. This is, you're right, this is like the cart a little bit behind the horse, or ahead of the horse, I should say. This is the cart ahead of the horse.
And Gary, I don't, I'm not, I'm not advocating not do it, I mean, you're not, I know you're not-
He's advocating not do it.
I'm not advocating not do it, I'm just asking why, why we're not taking them, why we're saying, no, you pay us the taxes you owe us.
Company coming in every town or city just to get them there.
Did they not ask before they decided to do that?
I'm not too sure that was.
I would think they would've asked, probably there was some agreement, that was on the case.
Similarly, there's a file I said, every time you sit down and go through the files.
I know, I just don't understand.
I assume they're down to-
I'm kind of the messenger here, Mike, I mean, I have some figures, so. Yeah, so I mean, if you want more on that, I'd say Paul Ruff is your, is your better guy, and we can discuss it more.
If the construction was twenty-five million, and you take a third, we'd be losing out on about sixteen hundred and twenty bucks, for a general fund.
We'd be losing out sixteen hundred dollars?
I mean-
We would.
I'm not talking about all the other eight, and I've used a lot of freedom there. I mean, I have no idea what the, I'm just saying that twenty-five million generates roughly eight million in equalized assessed value, and you take our, our, our tax rate, and you're talking sixteen hundred and twenty bucks.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're not talking about eighteen million, or, you know.
That's what I'm asking, I, because, because I wanted to know if we're leaving five, six, seven million dollars on the table by doing that, then I, then I think we need to think about it. If we're talking about sixteen hundred, two thousand, three thousand dollars, and that's gonna help them out bring more job, maybe hire ten more people. Yes.
Yeah, they hired five hundred more people.
Right, but they were already gonna do it anyways, what I'm saying.
Well, I don't know, I don't think they would.
They've got offices, they've got places.
That was the premise, I think, and that's what, you're right. I think the cart got ahead of the horse from that aspect, but I think it was an understanding that like, this community has welcomed them, and they welcomed us, and we welcomed them by putting their national headquarters here, and by saying, you know what? Instead of going to Alabama, or Tennessee, or whatever, this, this community has been good to us, therefore, we found the workers and the type of people that we want. We wanna put this here, so, I mean-
It offers us ten years of stability, hopefully.
Don't they have a plant in Southern Illinois somewhere?
Yeah.
Oh, they've got a lot of different ones, they have Flora and Salem also, and just in Illinois, but they also, they-
Could've gone there.
Great questions to ask.
I just wanna know what we're leaving when we make the question to that.
Yes, yes.
I have one other thing on the Health Department. We were kinda talking about the people on the committee, all the terms expire next year, is that true? It is, or isn't?
It isn't true, they've already expired.
They were supposed to check into, and I think they're supposed to ask you about it, so that's reasonable.
I'm gonna have that on the agenda for, for January.
Cause Ollie went back and he asked Janet to check the minutes for three or four years, and so I, I just-
Cause Ila went back and he asked Janet to check the minutes for three or four years, and so I, I just kind of interested to find out what, what they decided or if it's true.
Everybody's terms expired and then, yours is expired because every time that a new reorganization, a new person has to be appointed.
So all of them have to be reappointed next year, is that true?
They do because their terms have expired many years, but yours is just, that's how it works.
Well, they were asking about, I said, I'll check on it, so.
And you talked about maybe staggering.
Staggering.
Well, they are, yeah.
When you redo them.
Stagger them just like they were, were if they'd have kept. That got missed one time for reappointment, but we've got the information.
Okay, good.
Take care.
I just boot for Paul again. I don't know whether this, like I said, is being, in my mind, be more pro-actionary, proactive than reactionary. And I know we're talking about meetings and stuff and I know it's too late, but to think, would we not be better off having our, I don't know, the highway have to be involved in this, but our study sessions? I wonder if this is just not a benefit of before they highlighted the forty-eight hour before the board meetings. We, we have a lot of things that we discuss now, we talk about now. There's no way we can never get them on the agenda. I mean, if we really wanted, and maybe that's not the purpose of it, but in my mind, if we were actually discussing something and we really wanted something on an agenda.
So if we had our study session last week, last Friday.
Thursday or Friday, whatever.
Whatever.
Whatever, I, I know, I mean, I'm not trying to change a lot, I'm just thinking, because every, just like your questions and, and I had it down before because I had a question from Jeff earlier and Dan had sent me. And I thought, I don't know, I mean, I don't know the real purpose of this, or is this kind of a good buffering time?
This is the time where you fight over what's on the agenda.
You, you know, you know what I'm saying? It's like, is this a, a good buffering time so that you think about it a little bit before another month takes place?
Well, the second, the second meeting we, the second meeting we have is sort of what that's for. See, that's two, two and a half, three weeks out of the board meeting, but we could change that a little time.
But we never know what's gonna be, or second meeting, we don't know what's gonna be on that agenda.
What Alan's saying is we need to change it so we gotta.
I'm just, I'm not saying that we need to.
Well, no, but how many times have all of a sudden here and thought, gee, I wish we'd have thought about that, now we can't vote on it until the next meeting?
Or we gotta have a special meeting.
For years, it was always, the meeting was always on a Friday.
Was it?
Yes. And Jim, when Jim Keller took over, he was busy on Friday, so that's why it got changed to Monday. It was always on Fridays forever. And then you, you know, you had the opportunity to discuss, and if you had to change things.
You had forty-eight hours, didn't you?
You could do it before the Monday.
You're saying you had the meeting on, still had the study session Monday?
They always had it on, no, they always had it on Friday.
The study session, huh?
Yes. It wasn't called a study session, but that's what it was.
Yeah, the meeting was with that, you and I a couple of years ago.
And the meeting still was on Wednesday?
Correct. Yes. It's, it was always, always that way, forever.
Is there a problem with that, in your opinion?
Well, there might be. I'm just thinking of if it's the meeting before the board meeting, and I understand, you know, discussing and talking and planning on Friday. And then if something needs to be changed, we go back and change it, then I'm just thinking, logistically, this is a convenient way to get your board packets to you. Unless you want me to have them, if there's gonna be any changes made, do you see what I'm saying? I'd go back and make them and then, now electronically, they can go out.
Would you be able to get it in the paper or do you have to worry about that?
No, I don't have to worry about it in the paper.
Okay, but you could get it on your door, get it places that need to be.
Get it online and, on my, yeah, I mean, that. I'm just thinking how, you know, how to get your, see, like today, we can, we're gonna talk, we're talking about what's going on for Wednesday. And I understand both sides of it, but now you've got it and you can take it home and you can look at it, read it. I think we maybe need to think it through a little deeper.
Well, we can't take it through and, and prove it.
No, well.
Wednesday.
Well, I, and I just figured out not so much, because we can change those meetings anytime you want to, in a week.
Yeah, well.
Actually, I don't think they're supposed to change.
Well, no, you have to.
They approve annually.
Yeah, then you go through a whole.
Why? You just have to change this. Is this by resolution that you do this?
The statute says you're supposed to set your meetings.
Okay, but then whenever you change them, how do you do that?
Well, you have to give public notice.
We're not changing the meetings. We're just changing the study sessions. I don't think the statute does anything about study sessions.
I'm sorry, I was talking about the, I was on the county board meetings, I'm sorry.
Oh, I don't have, I mean, and I don't care about that.
Everybody's supposed, all committees is really supposed to have their meetings set annually, whether it's, right, whether it's airport meeting or.
Well, if you know that, but you, but you can't know that because I think we've argued that before in a FOIA complaint that you may not, you may not. Like if you wanna go to three meetings, every three months, have an animal shelter meeting.
Right.
You don't know when that's gonna be, so the chairman of the committee might call one, maybe not in three months, maybe four months, or maybe two months, not three months.
That's what we do at ESDA. We don't ever have a meeting at ESDA unless we need it.
Now, now like Aaron has his set every month because there's so much to discuss and decide. Those are set meeting dates.
I think it says when possible or as predicted, predicted or something like that.
And because we, because we coordinate the study sessions with the highway meeting, that's why we post ours for the full year. To change those, it's not that big of a deal to change a committee meeting like it is a board meeting.
Well, Aaron would have to be involved in that if we change that to the Friday because you still wouldn't have the road and bridge and map at the same time as the study session.
Could you have our packets ready on Friday morning? Why couldn't you have them ready Friday morning versus Monday morning?
Sure could.
They just have to, the bills would have to be put in a day or.
The problem with, what, what he's saying is, you're saying we're making changes then, and so he has to redo it. If we make changes on this packet, I'll need minutes and all, then it has to be redone and sent out.
Yeah, let's just say that today is Friday morning.
If you, you wanna do this so we can put things on here, well, well, if we put things on here, it has to be redone from what.
Well, okay, we, he has our packet ready Friday morning. We have our discussion Friday morning. And if changes need to be made, they can be done prior to eight o'clock or nine o'clock Monday morning because of the forty-eight hours.
Yes, I was just pointing out that you get a new one.
So.
So Wednesday, could we vote on having set in stone our board meetings and leave our study sessions open until we decide when we wanna do that? Could we do that? In case this idea would work out?
Where would we have, when would we, when would we have them if we have, set having them?
I'm kind of liking the idea of having them on Friday morning instead of Monday morning.
That's tougher on me, but.
About Thursday morning, is that the same difference for?
That's about the same.
Well, we have a board meeting on Wednesday.
And I didn't throw it out.
Oh, I know, I'm just glad you did, because I, I see.
Thinking if you really, because I didn't know the premise behind it until you said about Friday. I thought if the premise is, okay, just discuss what's happening, that's okay. But if the premise is trying to, maybe if you're, while you're discussing, you really want something else put on the board, maybe that's one thing. Or if it's a good idea not to be able to put something on the board of those because you're just being reactionary to something.
Well, something came up, let's say last Tuesday. It's too late for us to vote on it Wednesday because we're talking about it now, it's not on the agenda. And if Ben doesn't take it upon himself to put it on the agenda, then, but if we had a meeting on Friday and say, you know, this is important, we need to get this decided. Well, we can decide on a Wednesday, so we.
Long you can do it before nine o'clock on Monday. Is that correct?
Right.
I mean, you can, now at eight thirty, if you had something really pressing, talk about it before. Not unless your meeting was, you can't come here early to do it if you aren't meeting that time all the time. You can't change it. Without having a, a special meeting.
You can change that, the study session, you can change that part of it, couldn't you?
Okay, I have a question and then maybe a statement. Has it been an issue for us over the last four years that we really had to make a change for something very pressing? But what we couldn't say, okay, we recognize that we need to do something here. We've, we've had a, a large number of special board meetings. That's what those are for.
That's what's caused that.
Yeah, and, and those are fine. I mean, because see, you need, from Friday morning, you have to work backwards now, then we have to cut off. Earlier, I'm just saying, you know, and I don't know how.
One day.
Well, maybe two days because we're pushed right now anyway. I don't care, you just tell me what you wanna do, but if you guys want it Friday morning, that, that's fine. But don't forget, we can always call a special board meeting if something important comes up, which is what we have done a lot of the last four years.
Friday morning, you have a problem with me too, but that's all right. What's the desire?
Let's, let's breathe with it a little bit.
Well, I think.
Especially on that, I mean.
That part doesn't have to be decided today. The meeting, the board meetings do, but the other part. Okay, well, why don't we? Well, why don't we set it because it's on the agenda that way, that we set it up for Monday and, or like we, like, like it is now and then talk, talk about it and we can change it.
So we can change it if we want to.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. That makes the most sense, because I didn't realize. Andy had a problem.
Not every Friday, but most Fridays, hell, the mornings.
I don't think they have anything else.
That's enough, Alan.
You're gonna be late. Should've been later. Okay, I have. Just kidding.
Well, Aaron's not here now, so.
Well, I guess I, yeah, I messed up anyway. We've got the chair to make a presentation. Or not, I didn't know if you did.
We're all right now.
Carl, actually, with Aaron. Yeah, of course, for Aaron.
Did you get your answer on as far as the study session and your county highway meetings?
I think, I'd like to make a proposal to what Augie's put in front of you, some changes, and I'd like for him to bless them. Okay. January twelfth, good. January, I'm in the, on the board meetings, the only board meeting I see a problem is November eleventh.
Veterans Day.
It's Veterans Day. So I propose that it's eleven, four. November has two board meetings, is that correct, Augie?
Yes.
One of them's by statute.
Well, they both have to be because of the budget and the, or, uh.
But the statute says you have to have like one meeting in November on the third Wednesday or something. Well, whatever it says, I don't really try to make a hard.
I think it says statute, but I mean, we're required to have that, that second meeting.
Okay. I, I am recommending, and if Augie will bless, the November, the first board meeting in November is the fourth. I have a calendar here if anybody wants to play with it. Cause the, the.
Board meeting or study session?
Board meeting. It's the only board meeting I wanna, I think you guys ought to change.
That could mess up our budget.
Yeah, you can, yeah, we can't do it that.
Why wouldn't it? Why not? Because what ran into this year, we're, that was one of the things we approved after the fact.
Well, the bills is more of a problem than the budget.
We have two that month.
Yeah, but we also don't wanna be paying folks too late either.
Well, I'm moving it up a month. Four and eighteen instead of eleven and twenty-five. Or no, four and twenty-five instead of eleven and twenty-five. So you have three weeks between the four and twenty-five, just one, because the eleventh is Veterans Day. Take that one and move it there. It's proposed eleven and twenty-five, I'm suggesting four and twenty-five.
We'd have to ask Don and Augie.
That's about right.
Did it?
How's that? Did that, did that hooker name anybody else's?
I think we can have the budget ready by the fourth. I'm just concerned about payroll, bills, everything else.
It's two that month instead of one. I'm probably.
Oh, I understand, but I, we also don't wanna be paying bills at the end of the month when they're due the first of the month. We have times, we've set some of the bills up on timing. I'm not saying we can have a meeting on the eleventh. I don't know what the alternative is. Maybe it can be.
If we can agree, we, we.
So there's a county board meeting set on the eleventh, and that is Veterans Day, and the courthouse is closed.
That's correct.
Oh, we're gonna have to do something.
Jeff, what did we get into this year? A double checking to make sure we had the actual number of total days.
We just advertised the eleventh.
But then I thought it was kind of like we were talking about here. We kind of went back and said, oh, now we're gonna approve this. Wouldn't we be better off having that done two days ahead of time anyway?
Yeah, I mean, that's not the issue. The budget, I don't think is the issue. It's, it's everything else. I guess we can just get whatever bills we can get ready and then we'll go with the next one, the, the next meeting, we'll finish them off.
We'll make it the twelfth on a Thursday, Jeff?
Go ahead.
Well, that was my question. What about moving that to the twelfth or another day of that week? You'd rather not?
We're just gonna, no, I don't care. I mean, it, I don't have an issue as long as the office holders don't have an issue. Because we can make the fourth work, we can make any day work, okay?
It's going to.
There's another dynamic here.
What's that?
Now, we gotta get over to study session. There's a bunch of questions on study session.
Yeah, there's, there's, it's gonna delay bills, a certain number of bills, at least by a week.
We're talking about changing study sessions.
We don't. And then, you know, then we can, because the.
Rather than wait that forever year.
It can be changed, but I think we're gonna pass it here. So none of those bills get paid? Which bills don't get paid until we, I thought all those bills basically.
Yeah, we have to pass it. On Wednesday.
Well, the ones that would get paid in the first go around would not get paid till the second go around.
Well, anything having automatic, automatic payroll. A utility bill is, needs to be paid, is paid.
You want it on Thursday after Veterans Day or a fourth?
See, I think you run into there, you're gonna run into that time thing. On the budget, I mean, you're not concerned about that, but I think we need to have the number of days.
You want?
Have it the day before, November tenth, and then you won't have a time fix problem, and then you still will get your bills taken care of.
Yeah, I think that makes better sense.
I mean, we don't have, there's nothing, it's not, it has to be a Wednesday.
That's correct.
So let's just change it to November tenth.
Okay, so eleven, ten. Eleven, ten proposed. The rest of those look good. Okay, then on study sessions.
I suggest you work those out with Augie rather than us going through all the minutia.
It's not about me, this isn't about me.
Well, we don't even know what we're gonna do yet. Why should we go through a whole discussion when we're not sure what we're gonna do?
My understanding from the chairman is that we're gonna pass these study sessions so that I can meet with you guys next month.
Yes.
Why don't we just pass the one for next month?
We can pass them all and then change it when we decide to change it, right?
All right.
Twelve, twelve and twenty-sixth, good. We get down to May, there's a May twenty-two, twenty-five, can I turn that back? That's a Memorial Day. So I would suggest that you take May.
Twenty-fifth can't be. Right, you're saying twenty-fifth is Memorial Day? It can't be that.
Yeah, and I'm saying just scratch that one altogether. Scratch that study session altogether. It's my recommendation.
You mean road and bridge?
Everything.
Oh, wow.
That's my recommendation.
Well, we wouldn't have a road and bridge with you anyway.
That's on the other one. So I'm suggesting that you meet on May eleventh and June eighth and you scratch the twenty-fifth. Anything else? Would you be meeting a week, a week apart? That's what I did back when I was going first. I used to go first. And send Augie stuff and he'd look at my stuff and critique it. Okay, so I'm, I'm recommending to Augie that you scratch the one that says May twenty-two, five. That's my recommendation.
Well, Aaron, not to step on your toes here, but I don't think that's any, quite honestly, your concerns.
Yeah, okay, fine.
I mean, I'm staying with, I think, I'm glad you're going to, because the twenty-fifth is Memorial Day and we can't, because we may want to even set a study session just for the second time of that month.
Yeah, the only thing there is the dynamic with.
May twenty-fifth, Augie's probably not gonna be here either.
Well, right. That's what I'm saying. I appreciate that you went back and checked that, but as far as. We may choose to have another one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, keep going.
Yeah, I didn't, you want me to quit even mentioning any of these?
No, no, keep going.
Point these out to us.
If you move to August 24th, I'm saying you move that to 31.
Why?
Because September 7th is Labor Day. So August 31. September 7th is Labor Day. So you guys would meet on August 31 instead. Make sense?
Because you're saying that our other one is on the, on the 9th.
You're on the 7th.
I mean, our actual board meeting.
Your actual board meeting is on the 9th, that's correct. It's all kind of here.
I got them both here, I got them both here.
So August 24th, just change to August 31. I'll just give you this, Augie. Anybody have a question or comment on that?
Go ahead.
Okay, September, September 7th's gone.
Yeah, wow.
It's Labor Day.
Right.
Then September 21st's fine. October, instead of 12, which must be a day, Columbus Day, I recommend you do it on October 5th. And the 26th, you do on the 19th. So October, I suggest you do the 5th and the 19th with the board meeting on the 14th. Any comments on that? 5th and the 19th, I'm scratching the 12th and 26th. November.
Hang on a second.
I made a copy of this.
I just keeping the 14th in the possible there, okay. November. What you looking at there?
Okay, instead of November 9th, I would recommend the 2nd because this is the discussion we already had. The 11th is Veterans Day, and there was a board meeting scheduled for that. We just changed it to 11-10. Or you guys just changed it to 11-10. So instead of a November 9th study session, I'm saying November 2nd. A Monday study session. So you moved your board meeting from 11 to 10, now you're moving your study session from 9 to 2. Any comment on that?
These guys think that's too early in the month.
Well, it is too early because you're not gonna have any, you're not, your agenda's not gonna be, you know, if we have a study session of eight days ahead of our board meeting, we're not gonna have the agenda set, we're not gonna have any bill, we're not gonna have anything. That's just too early. I mean, it might work for your, your.
Okay, so we'll do it on 11-9. So the, we'll leave, leave 11-9 alone. That's okay, it works good, 11-9's okay. It'll probably get revisited anyway.
It definitely has to be.
So now it's the day before. Those are my recommendations. And if you guys approve of my recommendations, I'll come to you on January 12th, on the first of these dates. For road and bridge and MFT, I'll be giving the clerk a memo. So that we can meet on January 12th.
We'll be approving these Wednesday, but we may change it.
Right.
And that would also mean that you would be changing the road and bridge probably too.
Probably, yeah. So I'll make a copy of these and get Augie a memo today saying our study session is the first of the two.
I've got the, in your packet, committee assignments. I changed it where everybody had it. Six committee assignments. We had some didn't have the actually four or three. Some had eight, and it's been changed to six committee assignments for everybody. I think I changed it to a mix, but nobody probably will like it.
You have all the rest of the kids have to sit back and see what it was.
So you know whether you.
I would have a whole wine.
Okay. No comments on that. Looking over the agenda, we have, um, we're gonna be setting the times for the board meetings and the other, and we adopt Robert's Rules of Order. And it has a guideline for conducting meetings, which I'm hoping that the guideline means we're using it, not word for word. I hope guideline makes that. Where you don't have to word for word for Robert's Rules because we don't.
No, we don't.
Do we, is it, is it appropriate time to ask if we ought to think about shortening our public comment to two minutes instead of five?
Well. We may have had it in the past, it made meetings too long, but we haven't had that comment here lately, so. But that'd be, that is a decision of the board, what, amount of minutes.
Was there a way we could give, uh, cut it to two minutes and give you discretion to extend it to five minutes? Thought it was pertinent?
No. Then other things, this file, the sheriff's standing report, did you have anything on that? And county clerk. And once again, I didn't give the county clerk an opportunity to give his dissertation.
Thank you for giving it for me. Ben and I worked on the meeting dates and, uh, I know the highway has always seemed to drive that. It has in the past, I guess, and, uh, so Aaron and I did not get together because this was supposed to be a study session of the dates and the times, and I think it's been good conversation, so. We do anything that you guys want to do, but that's what I'm here for. What else is on here? It's all I have.
Anything else to come for a meeting?
Anything you want to say, Sheriff?
Nope, just trying to get things motivated, got a lot of employment issues. Or employee issues, I reckon, trying to get some.
Is the 911 thing meshing good?
Pardon?
Is the 911 thing starting to get back together?
Yeah, 911's not a problem. We're down on corrections, we've lost well, me, three road guys. Got one guy hired, he coming, he roped this weekend, he gonna start in a couple of weeks, but we probably won't have him very long. Cause he's on a list for another department. But I got him for a little while.
Certified near it then.
Yep.
You need a sheriff's committee meeting, probably. Carl's chairman of that, Jeff Boyton, and Mike Kelsey are on the sheriff's.
Yeah, just looking. Got two or three guys in, in line, but the problem is getting somebody that's certified that's, can work because everybody else offers a little better package and and there's two or three guys, I'm afraid, two, two hired just because they're gonna be willing to spend the money and they're gonna be gone, so.
How many pressure officers do you have now, full-time?
We've got four full-time, we've got one in line, I was just trying to get a couple of other things done before I, well, he's already, he's worked here previously. So he's ready, and when he's certified, all he can get, has to do, I think, do his firearm certification. Maybe a little computer training on the look-in procedure, and other than that, he'll be ready to go. And then we've got some dispatchers that are also have been correctioned, so they can or days off if we need somebody, they, they've been filling in, so.
And the dispatchers you've got, four, five, yeah, five?
Yeah, five full-time and then.
And some part-time.
Using a bunch of part-time, yeah, they've all come back, some of them have already been in this week getting re-certified to so we ought to be in good shape on, on dispatchers. That's kind of been my big radio guy, I've gotta get ahold of him today so we can meet with the fire, police departments, because that deal all has to be, every radio in the county has to be pre-done.
And that software, that's when we were talking about that.
That's with the software deal, yeah.
And you think, do you think in your mind and heart that's gonna fix it?
I hope in my mind and heart that fixes it, because I know what the expense is gonna be if it doesn't. Hopefully $2,000 and we'll give or take a few dollars with it. I mean, we're gonna give up some stuff, but he explained it all to me, of course, we got all this encryption and but even still, this, with this turbo and this radio. I mean, unless you're just a big time, you know, electronics geek and got a lot of money to spend, you're still not gonna be able to scan it, so. But we gotta get out of radio program, so they're all the same.
So by doing what you're talk, he's talking about doing, the only thing that has to be done with all the radios in the county is reprogram.
Right.
They don't have.
Well, some, some reprogram and some, I reckon, deprogram.
Okay.
Or deprogram and then reprogram.
I mean, no one's gonna have to force to buy new radios or anything like that.
It's just a program, so. I'm hoping.
Yeah.
I'd rather spend, you know, if we, hopefully spend $2,000 and fix it, but if we don't, it's we'll have to do another route, but.
There's no way that you can check it? Check that what you thinks, or what they think will work, work without?
Pretty much, we're just gonna have to put it in and see what kind of problems we have. If we can get them guys from cell one to go around, can you hear me now?
Do a good job for Davey.
Yeah.
He kinda looks like that guy.
Can you hear me? Oh, hell, better turn it off. Good luck. Hope it works.
And I know something we talked about before during the union negotiations was getting telephones for the deputies.
Yeah.
You know, if that's something that we need to address, you know.
You know, I think still, like I say, we're, the guys are using their own phones a whole lot. I mean, saving mileage, but also puts their phones up for FOIA and subpoena and all that kind of stuff, so.
When are they talking about maybe this radio thing, this month sometime, or?
Well, I, I talked to him. Well, I think within just a few days of the last study session when I was at, of course, we had the study session, the 911 study session. And I think I talked to him either that, that day or the next day. And he said, you just, once you get in, you get with me and I'll come down here, cause he wanted to get with me and Jamie and.
So you're working on it?
Yeah, yeah.
If this works, that takes care of what we wanted the cell phones for, doesn't it? I was thinking that was what.
Well, yes and no.
Yes and no.
I mean, part of the problem with the cell phones is, we get so many people that are wanting to call, see, we've got a cell tower, or cell antenna on our tower. So we're whether we've got to buy the phones and we get the service or vice versa. But it's basically, they answer calls back and forth and use the cell phones for our, well, like when we're doing drug stuff, we can use them instead of broadcasting everything over the radios. I mean, like I say, there shouldn't be very many people that can hear it, but.
Seems to me like Cellier One at one time talked about donating phones to us. I know the Ed had talked to them and they were talking about, what I remember, they were gonna donate them.
Like the other day, they.
Cause they're, we're providing them.
Right.
Tire.
Tire space.
Space.
Greg got a thing the other day.
Phones in time.
I'm not sure what arrangements.
We get so much time, I think, but like the other day, they had a phone deal, you could get a just package, you, you know, they were selling me a, one of these phones for like a penny or something like that. So, I mean, it's just gonna be for the four or five road guys.
Do you, so you're not gonna buy, you're not, you just want a basic phone, not a smartphone or anything like that?
Well.
And I was gonna, that, that curtails on, where are you at on your computers, on your cards? Have you, have you started putting those in yet, or?
We haven't got them in yet. I, I looked at the computers last night, we've gotta get the tire, we've gotta get the service, I gotta talk to city, um, but they hadn't sold theirs. I mean, that's gonna be a kind of a drug out affair. Yeah. But I mean, like the cell phone, now there's a lot of guys using apps in, in their job for, well, like, there's a Spanish app where we can talk into the phone and it'll translate it to Spanish, or they can talk into the phone and translate it back to us in English or whatever, Spanish or German or I know some of the city guys are using that with the Hispanic crowd and so I'm not sure whether to, you know, just, I mean, I like to stick with just a basic phone, but the more I look into it, that I mean, it's kind of handy, sometimes you pull up at some of these scenes and you really need a picture of, you just whip your phone out and take two or three pictures real quick instead of go back to your truck and.
But, that was the phone that, that they were given for a penny too, was the phone that had that.
Yeah, it was one of the Samsung fours or, you know, one of the bigger smartphones, yeah.
The sixes, they got a new, they got a new deal out on them for a penny. AT&amp;T though.
But I would think if we're providing tire space for the, for, for cell one or something, they ought to cut us.
And I have, you know, somewhere, and I'm sure we've got a contract, I mean, I'm gonna go to cell one and see, I'm sure they've got it too and.
Take your big heavy bolt cutters with you.
We really don't need to guess.
Right.
Well, later in the month, you know, you can do some checking, if you need to have the sheriff's committee meet, you know, we'll set up a meeting and go from there.
Anything else?
Yeah, Ben, I forgot something. But it's again. It didn't get your board packet. This is an invitation to our joint Christmas party with the circuit clerk's office and probation and the judges' chambers.
You're not gonna have a Valentine's party this year?
Well, the dynamics of the office holders have changed and, uh, the girls thought it might be time to, let's just have one big courthouse.
So it's a joint party, huh?
Yeah, it's a.
Where are you popping in this? Sheriff. I mean, the first party that's raining.
I think I'll stay away. The, uh, yeah, I, I've had the so we don't have so many different Christmas parties in the courthouse. That, I mean, that's why I went to a Valentine's party.
What one was that?
Well, it was good.
Carl liked those Valentine's.
And I, I may still have that, but, but this is now.
We get some mistletoe there.
The circuit clerk has, uh, discussed about, with us about, let's just all go in together, have a courthouse Christmas party, and there you go. So Valentine's Day is.
Save us a few pounds, maybe.
Yeah, it's not completely off the table yet. Carl.
I hope not.
You're invited to a joint party.
Carl likes, I love you cookies. You might get the sheriff, since he's not in this, to go in with the Valentine's party, you could have a Valentine's sale, give away a sale for a weekend or something.
I'd have a silent auction for that or something.
That's this, this, uh, is this Friday.
Smell walking up.
Oh, that'd be great.
You can tailor it.
You know, you know we record these meetings.
It's good, so you like a promotion? Okay, I make that motion.
I'm gonna motion the second to adjourn the meeting although the mayor opposed, saying fine.
The theme could be give her something for Valentine's Day, you got some.